It is five o'clock. It is time for us to start the August meeting. Regular scheduling of our community school board. When I call the board, they will all be able to listen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to go ahead and roll for three row of four.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Michael Wood. Dr. Ethan Johnson Woods. I am present. Dr. Bob.
Present.
All right, and Mrs. Johnson.
Present.
All right, all of our members are present in the afternoon.
We are now having a official meeting. Let's move on to item two. The approval of the agenda. Today's meeting, I'm taking the motion. This is a motion for a second.
Federal.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any other votes? The agenda has been asked. Let's move on to item number three. Gary Ray, Snapshots. I'd like to yield the floor to Mrs. Chelsea.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Johnson and community members of comparison and virtually. It is always a pleasure to give Snapshots to meetings that are happening across the district. And today is something different. Today I'd like to share with you, WOW. WOW stands for Williams on Wheels. It's a really warm club of students and teachers and parents and staffers who have so decided to provide your votes to the school. It started on Thursday at school, as you can see on Wednesday, August fourteenth. And our president, Linda Goldson, who is in this video and also here today, is kind of a creative girl. You all wave your hands. And we see this as an additional way to engage students about being excited about learning, getting up early and also making their exercise to get their minds right for teaching and learning. In the bottom right corner, you will see that they have a front page. And that was just one, they actually made three front pages to that story, which also is another very good one. If you're interested in learning more about the WOW program, certainly you can speak with this person. Visit their Facebook or our website, yourschools.org. I did just want to add a notice that I did attend a kick-off on August fourteenth. And in that crowd was our late security guard, playing a teacher, Mr. Heedus, on his motorcycle. And so up to the very last time I saw him, he was engaging the children far above and beyond what his mom tweets are. And he rests in peace. And last but not least, we'd like to just remind you that our athletic season, the whole spring, there are plenty of opportunities for you to just enroll, I know you all have different schedules for various activities. Our online site, volleyball games. And we are kicking off our football season this Friday. We have a Gary Ray that's on against East Chicago Central. Let us crush him. Thank you, Lord, and I appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate that presentation. I'm going to take just a moment here, while I like, and ask you to all, um, please support. And we remember, Ms. Royster, if we can have a moment of silence. Thank you for your participation. I'd like to move on to item number four of comments. I believe you have a sheet here in front of me. I'm going to ask Vice President Johnson to recite the process of all the communities of the world where they have issues.
The Gary Ray News group or says, "Well, it's comments from the community. As a result, the agenda of each committee requires time of expression." Period of expression is when it is written in a particular language, whether it is a level of speech in the Bible, one of the agenda or takes rest concerns relative to our operations, school state, school or actions in the other areas of general educational interest. If there are many people wishing to rest in the work, we may make them into an on-time person to stay. Comments should be directed toward and at individual board members. Studies should not be used as our argumentative person, may make the conversation not based on the other person. It should not be possible for all representatives to set up complaints against any of the employees of the Gary Ray News School Corporation. And in any more of the trust meetings, issues related to personnel and individual services in the individual school, we refer to the principal on appropriate infrastructure and attempt to resolve issue prior to appeal before reform. Speaking of an action occurring in time to the other person. Before president will force free rules and take actions necessary to maintain an order of meaning, such actions may include not only interrupting the spirit of things to man, be under the rule of heaven or jeopardize our rights to rules. President may tell me if there are any specific rules. And then the total amount of time of all the other comments, there is a large number of people wishing to rest in the work or there is a large amount of other business to be done.
Thank you, Rusty Johnson. I would just like to kind of acknowledge this community that starting next, uh, board meeting, with the sign of sheet, we will have a area where you can know what part of the agenda that you're going to be speaking to or about, so that we can be consistent with that, obviously, it's just a second. At this point, I'd like to open the floor to, um, Ms. Darlene, I believe.
Good afternoon, board and superintendent. We have hired a very diverse group of new employees for the Gary Ray News School Corporation. And I was just wondering, have you guys had a type of sensitivity training or something? Because many of the new employees come from backgrounds that is much different than the Gary Ray News School Corporation is accustomed to. So, as they read the public and as they interact with you and the employees and the citizens of Gary, I just wanted to know if something is put in place to help them to understand the culture that we have. Because in the past, we had an environmental culture and we need to work together to make everything work. And so that's my comment. Thank you, God bless you and you too.
Mrs. McRae.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, board members and superintendent. I don't even know where to start with this because I'm again a research. The topic of cell towers, near schools and in communities. The amount of research that I asked and done was just luminous. So I am going to give you just a smidgen of what I found online for your reference. And I just couldn't, there's no way I could summarize all of this. Just let me start by saying that the research that I'm going to leave with you was done by a group called the Environmental Trust. And they are a global science research corporation. And they do research on a lot of environmental issues due to the toxic emissions all around the world. And so, like I said, there's just so much there. Just let me give you a high of here. So, in regard to cell towers, it says here that they emit a type of radiation. Cell towers have wireless antennas that emit radio frequency, non-ionizing radiation. When these antennas are close to our homes and schools, our daily exposure to this radiation is increased. This radiation is considered a new form of environmental pollution. Effects from this type of radiation documented in scientific research include increased cancer risk. Cellular stress can make sleep issues, genetic damage, changes to reproductive system, mammalian cells' impact to the nervous system. Children are highly vulnerable. Children are more vulnerable to this as they absorb deeper into their brains and bodies. And they seem to have tons of stuff, so without, uh, into the final excerpt. Scientists recommend children's exposure to this type of radiation being reduced. So, I'm going to, I'm going to hand out, basically, what I just read and more for all of you to look at when you make your deliberations about the cell towers that we want to place on two schools. My recommendation would be, we've got a lot of empty schools. We've got a lot of land in the city that is not surrounded by neighborhoods and children. And it seems to me that if these cell tower towers are going to go up, that they should not be in an area where children will be ultimately negatively affected and used.
Mrs. Coleman.
Good afternoon, God bless us. President and superintendent of the board, I continue standing against using cell towers at our school and to also withstand some of the studies. It says even in the radiation absorption was the same and that adults affects the children can be far more serious. A child's developing brain and working systems are more susceptible to environmental stressors. We know that Gary had high ash rates, high cancer rates, and our children face a lot of environmental stressors. So I'm going to ask this board not to allow a cell tower, not to add another environmental stressor, but to protect the young minds, developing brains that are trusted into our care. And as I say, all money is a good money. So to put our children's health at risk for a cell tower, that definitely isn't good money. But I do want to talk about something that this board can support, which is a field house. And I'm very concerned that one of our schools had to close because of air conditioning. When MGT was here, they had our hundred million dollars. And for us to now be in a position where MGC in August two thousand eighteen do have accepted a facility master plan, which included a field house for our children. Now, this is something positive for our children. It's hard for us to get it done. But if people want to make money and if we look at Edison Learning and MGT, which the money paid to them is more than the common school loans, then people have a problem. So what I would ask the board to do is send a look at people who want to want to have profit over our children. Let's get our legislative agenda together. Because we know the turnaround activities, it's our money through private jobs. Our children need a facility that they can go to six days a week. We need to certify who can count, who will be, we have to get this amazing. And I hope this is not a website. Because it's not just a beautiful canvas, it's a canvas that's with the wrong business of a nature preserve. We think of the nineteen seventy-two political convention where so many African Americans and people of color were propelled to our offices. We have to remember that this is the agenda that should not have burdened us. They don't have costs. They don't have anything in this American system to be to the debt for them not reading, not writing, not going to school. So that's why I would ask you to not use a cell tower. But instead, let's get our legislative agenda together to look out for our babies and our children to help us succeed. Thank you.
Mrs. Seidenrod.
Good evening, uh, to all the board members. Thank you for your presence. Um, special hello to our board and our superintendent and our president of our board. My concern, there are two months of our programs. Program has sites, but only one report that I haven't provided. And I'd like to know even when the additional twenty G reports will be available to us. And in fact, we're not going to allow the most facilities and every conference. I want to personally thank our superintendent, Superintendent Stowe, for providing a manual outline that she said she delivered. We are not used to our requests being behind our own rhythm. So thank you very much. Also, thank you for these two little screens being available to our audience today so that we can see the reports on the screens wherever we are in this meeting room. We thank you for accommodating the audience. My question to you today, where do we stand regarding construction of our little house? Our WSLA's swimming pool? The repair of our swimming pool? Where do we stand regarding the West Side Union Academy roof replacement? Please consider establishing voter training, voter registration, candidate education, one-on-one, all year at the West Side Union Academy. And establish your career career center and West Side Union Academy as holding stocks. God bless each of us to do and be the best vessels for our students and our school system.
Dr. Spenglerberg. Mr. Buzz.
Good afternoon, superintendent and superintendent of the board. Uh, at the very beginning, I actually forward giving the internet open reference to the board ready as a student with a PAX program, I guess is what they were saying. He said I need to submit a, what do you call it? What do you mean, uh, request or innovation? But I don't know, in the end, I hope, I don't know if I have that, I didn't do it. But anyway, I want to get here today because I did some research. I don't know how about I did, but I did some research on the, the cell towers. Now, our research indicates that the power that damages the company is what they call ionizing frequencies. Which we know they from, like I can't explain the gammaries. Five G means physical generation cell phone. So I suppose still a lot of the business that they need to run on. Now, some people will get a city that they're early to consider like somebody have a baby that's ended up with a rack with other, uh, dancer or your cell phone. That's the same, uh, radio frequencies that that's not aimed. Only ionizing is dangerous. Also, my research indicates that these other problems can be, you know, probably like increasing. And when they put a quarter to where people sell their homes, it increases value to the house. I'm not saying it's all, I'm getting a little bit of what the actual facts are. Because I don't know, I don't know, maybe they don't know that this is only here and this is out, this is out. But the previous guy, we all want to see, say that there's low frequency. Radio, uh, radio frequency, which is very low. Just like in, they just don't want to buy it. The total, you could do the whole thing, it's going to get, or the way you, because that's what I need to do. Now, maybe remember, uh, I think, uh, I think, uh, what do you, what do you, uh, what do you, uh, so that's the same. This is, I don't know, my, my, but then, uh, the answer to that, that, you know. That some thing that you may need to be aware of, that it's not really a lot.
This is what I was, I was saying, for your time, just hold for a minute, let me get your mind back up, you will allow you regain your time.
Okay, thank you so much. So, if you have a cell phone. Thank you. If you have a cell phone, you will get a call from the cell phone, like, in the bed with you, or next to you in the bed, or cell phone. What would happen, the danger happens when, uh, the ionizing bed, that was spoken about, the danger, like, the heckery. The initial of cell, when you can pick up, you know, that's why it's called ionizing. That's why I expect it to be on the list, so, I remember, a lot of people made, uh, were, like, who want to. That's why they're, they have, they didn't even see the book, they didn't call children, they didn't, they, but when they're there, they come about being, who's, maybe like, materials. So I also want to say that, uh, the things that I said, we just want to, to myself, to go and research. About, whatever you can, damage to the community, to children, there's some people, people that have another condition, that they're not protected. But all of that, it is, it was that I am, and what I've already said, is that I am.
With the hours.
Good evening, Board, and everyone, students today. First of all, I would say that I am completely informed and interested today. Uh, good afternoon, this is, but, uh, but this, yeah. First of all, um, the women are getting a shirt that says, focus on positive. And all that I do, I see guidance. I ask for the words to say and how to say them. Focus on the good. It is a phrase that refers to the practice of positive thinking, or an optimistic attitude. It means for the focus on good things and not negative. We all have opinions that, in most degrees, are stereotypical, it's okay to be stupid, but let's do it respectfully and in the case. I said it was going today because I was basically wanting to provide their order. And I was saying, because the guidance I can have, I could give you some students today. There's a reason for what I, everyone, I was took it to go away. And I turned it and led with the first finish, because things were so totally out of control. We all, the public, everyone, get attendance, everyone, all our children, we deserve respect. And we deserve to be treated like the human beings that we are, by professional people, by adults. So, I just encourage everyone, and I don't see any children here today, but let's show respect one to another. You know, it goes a long way. Um, again, uh, you're disturbed, and they can pass things that I can. Anyone that has the children and they need help, or need to, so, um, please do that, I have everybody available. So, with that being said, and lastly, I want to say this. Um, long I have my children for our school, my very children were out, I followed here at the schools. I was across the yard of the whole world to work. I did, I got the love that I have for children. So, I encourage everyone, let's be mindful of the way that we do that business, and the way we do that, as well. Thank you so very highly, but I appreciate you taking one of you.
And at this time, I just want to share with group, as we shared, uh, with Rusty Johnson earlier. We, uh, set aside thirty minutes for all the comments. I had a gentleman that showed up here, that was late, that didn't sign up, and I think he gave him the opportunity to sign, because I didn't know about where we were with those thirty minutes. We have, uh, six minutes, let us serve, if you want to come up and share, I will, I will do that, too.
Good evening, ladies, this is our colon, uh, community servant, uh, I would, um, I would ask us, you all to hand in a program to give all the people, just, uh, students that have been teaching at the level to vote, I would like you to have a program to have them sign up to vote before that time comes. Also, um, um, I, I still before you all, tell you all that MGT was setting you up for failure. I, I would like to know if you all can, and when I say you all, I mean, just today. Uh, I would like to call Sue Lord and, uh, Newsroom Lieutenant, if you may, sue MGT and all these other companies that claim that they were supposed to fix the heating air conditioner, the roof, the swimming pool, everything else. It also was allocated in the racks that they were supposed to fix to realize. Sue them, why do you all have, uh, take that on, on your hands? Sue them for the money, and have them repair the vehicles, stuff. And I'm working, okay? Um, and also, there is more than just one radio station in this area. I do not know any radio station, I see each other, but there's more than one. I think that someone should call the radio stations, both of them, or all three of them. Call them, and then let us know when there's an emergency in the schools or anything. Let us know, we just want to know, we want you all to be transparent. That's all we ask for. And then you could also say, does everyone have Facebook, everyone has, has computers? Uh, send it home, in the backpack to the children, these same age, where we send it to them, to their parents, but still, send it home, anyway. I'm here as a community, we're a citizen, to ask, to give them a help. We have, uh, cell, uh, attorneys, please, if it's possible, sue. They wrote the contract. Thank you very much, you listen, everybody.
I just wanted, uh, thank you, Board, for giving me this, since I'm, I'm working in, uh, I live in the area. And I just like to give a brief, uh, issue of, uh, cell towers on these active schools. Um, I'm a graduate of Genesis, uh, I started a petition many years ago, and, uh, over a hundred and nine households in the area have already signed my petition. Uh, I'd like to speak to something that Mr. Boggs said, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, good last name, but I'd like to speak to what Public Security said, uh, which the idea that, uh, not everybody is affected by this type of radiation, but that some people with better conditions than people that are sensitive are. If there are students at these schools who turn out to be sensitive to this type of radiation, and they don't know until the tower are already installed at their school, well, they're, like, had bodies, I mean, even if it was a playground, or everybody can leave, or, if, like, they can't be affected by it, at least they can go up, leave. They, they, they can't leave, if, if, if they have chronic headaches, or insomnia, or inflammation, or whatever kind of problem. They're basically stuck in the, that's at their school. Uh, and, yeah, that's basically the only, uh, one is that, so maybe for, uh, you're gonna have a chance to speak, um, and that's all here.
I would like to move on to item five, our agenda, send agenda.
This is Chairman, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the items under number five, instead of agenda, five point one through five point six.
Does this motion, the floor, say it?
Say it again.
Then move, second, discussion of motion. Here we go, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to move on to item six, on our agenda, item six point one, I'd like to, uh, give the floor to Dr. Sos.
Thank you so much, Chairman. Uh, so, step one, the laws with the second reading of the very essence of the Bible, I'll, if you recall, that our last meeting, we talked about the Bible, which in turn are zero, 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 zero. So, if you can hold those up once, please. Um, there are several Bible that we present, um, for half of this information, I will tell you that there are a total of thirty-six. And I shared the order that we are essentially, as we come out of the table, the belief of the plane at the same time, while we're doing it. We have to have policies, the policies, we then will have administrative guidelines, and this helps our staff, our students, and our reader community understand how we operate. With that being said, um, I want to give the, uh, time, and the board members to look at any of the particular topics that are given to you regarding the Bible. And if you have any questions, uh, we'll give you to answer, and then, uh, then, if we're ready to make your vote.
Thank you, Dr. Sos, I'd like to open the floor, any board members, any questions, little, decided, areas of regards to the Bible? Here we go, then, I will give the opinion of the motion.
So, I'm looking at you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then move, second, discussion of motion. Here we go, discussion, can we do a whole, all, over, roll?
Mr. John, Mr. Sos.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes.
I say yes, Dr. Cloud.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
If the five is, is in, no one is?
With the vote, number five, in, in agreement, and in all, votes against, the motion carries. Let's move on to item number six, on our agenda, six point two, excuse me.
This is Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the donation for the year in this school, for the fall, for the rainy.
So the motion on the floor, and then move, second, discussion of this motion. Here we go, discussion, maybe we have, uh, roll of all, please.
Mr. Sos?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson, Lewis?
Yes.
Dr. Cloud?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
I say yes, with a five zero.
Like, I move on to item number six, point three.
This is Chairman, I'm understanding that, um, that we're going to have, must be, because I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, it's not yours, so. Come in here, thank you.
Uh, yes, he's not going to be there for the attendance today, um, we can go ahead and accept it, and then, speaking, he will give him the opportunity to make presentation. To the board, that's okay.
I'm going to make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then move, second, discussion of this motion. Well, yes, sir. Just want to make a, this is, I can't. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll of all, please, sir.
Mr. Sos?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson, Lewis?
Yes.
Dr. Cloud?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
I say yes, with a five zero.
With the vote, five, in favor, zero, kiss. Vote to approve the donation, like, I'm counting, I'm counting, approve. Uh, thank you, House, for this, and, and chair, as I just, one of the, who give him the opportunity for, um, chance to present the check, uh, at every meeting.
Mr. Chair? Yes, it's going to make sure, it's really counting, commission.
Yes, thank you for clarification. Make sure we know that it is, please. Let's move on to item six, point four, on the agenda.
This is Chairman, I might suggest that we, don't think it's appropriate that we move item six point four to six point six. Um, one is the cycle for the athletic department workers, the next one is the donation by Boeing Company, and the last one is a donation given by Public System Union.
Would you clarify your motion, so that I'm not absolutely able to hear you?
That, uh, we moved to approve the last three items in that section, five point four through five point six.
So the motion, the floor, say it, second, then move, second, he needs discussion on the motion, when he says the items. Roll of all, please, six point four, to six point six.
Mr. Sos?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson, Lewis?
Yes.
Dr. Cloud?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
I say yes, with a five zero.
Thank you. I would like to move further on to our agenda, item number seven, information, and I'd like to share, ask for, uh, Minister White to take the mic and share with us.
Good evening, uh, members of the year, students, or trustees, submitted, Dr. Sos, and guarantee.
This is just a presentation uh of the Crown Castle. We have the uh present to board the trustees about building a cell tower in um the center of ministry in here in this school. Uh thank you, there you go, joining us today and the board.
Thank you for just the line, can you put the line over so I can answer my question?
Alright, so uh let me know if you can hear me but uh thanks for letting me get my speaking today and I'm sorry everything may be really there uh in person that actually I think I'm a little bit there today. Uh and then people applying to go with us and uh turn the uh I'm annoyed being my own. So I I do have to do this personally, uh so very appreciate your recognition of presenting uh sort of to Capitol Hill during this purpose uh with a connection here. Uh that's the way I set up ours with our Crown Castle. Crown Castle is a very large uh owner of uh cell towers and a marvelous uh infrastructure in the United States. So they own a large amount of solar towers and electric power. Uh and also one of the small cells which are maybe solar towers or electricals. They're a little more solar power coming side and then. When they use it they operate uh the cell towers and so and the wireless carriers that eighteen feet tall. They will come on off the tower uh over the years as the in our case uh in the their service. But this is the cell tower we built uh and just from the known Crown Castle. Uh so Crown Castle uh of course apart there um you know possibly for all these people doing opportunities with the managed Carter. Uh and then in you know different area they have the natural products or you know they're marketed uh and then. So they they identify uh areas in the area where uh the project being managed with additional towers uh in the area. So uh the two area, the two areas that they serve in uh are the various surrounding areas in this school and in their uh elementary. So at this point um as Mr. White said, in an old region has been signed in you know. We we have you know formerly you know here and in our way. Uh we would like to propose uh the towers at these two schools. So each would be model cell tower um and overall be one hundred and like you can hundred and hundred fifty feet tall minimum location. They would use your typical model cell towers uh there um um. We're not I'm reading pretty much Dr. Miles, you know, probably one of those towers in this urban area. Um so these two areas in particular um you know uh the new tower in the area with the gas. Uh the towers um for the school and health school surrounding area, they're putting a new tower in there. They're free uh and then only with a new uh data covered capacity there. Free of service um free of capacity on these specific towers uh that are there in that area. So what we would see is an enhanced and then any oral uh wireless cards. Those when I use to turn on either phone or like and then tool hours and their data reports in that area. Uh so the 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 locations that we were done are in their own area in this school. Uh we prefer in there to need uh get an act out there. We would need an area of uh seventy by seventy feet for the actual cell cell towers which is in the cell. Uh this is we have a spin tower will be center. Uh as I said, uh the the tower area of the school uh typically between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty feet. And in their elementary would be between a hundred and ten or a hundred and twelve. Uh those are the technical area uh estimates for for tower at those two locations. So uh the other one we just want to say was all the whole will be uh eight hundred. Uh and so other than that, um you know, we really would be much you know from the land and or other than you know. Uh the areas, so you could uh ask us for that. Uh this would be the least ready to Crown Castle would be a a um a lease rate, two these coolest rate uh for every law. So it may be a permanent location that we would be looking for. So significantly uh they look at fifteen year leases by as you know. So this is really a permanent location that they're looking for. Once we give that some power that they're on, uh you know, it's a very just have a permanent way to add um you know, a lot of energy and capacity uh for the surrounding areas there as you know, you go over from forty to five, even five to six feet. Uh and this is how we would be equipped to handle you know all the other areas over the years and the future technologies as well. So uh we would give away two you know, the technology for uh schools in this surrounding area and also um obviously a you know, our entire uh to introduce schools here uh for the end of you know, otherwise we aren't being being utilized or anything. So we look at our position at this point, uh you know, we are uh at this point is you know, we're relating to that um you know, that this. This is a school where they just move for their each decision and then they want to move forward with those. And so I think that there too, this screen that's showing uh kind of the photo of the photo of typical model installation. It would be seen to be that's been at base. Uh typically a a photo for that's landscape uh landscape around it is a shield of the base of the tower. Uh I just thought I'd demonstrate it would be uh within a perimeter, you know, the tower tower. It's been held still now uh in in the case of members here somewhere. Uh and then the tower itself would be pretty much looking at there. We uh pretty much the same, you know, multiple cell towers with this. So uh multiple cell tower right here within there's a couple like within the miles of each already in the center of the area in this school. They may have two miles. Uh so there's there's several of their uh and it would be pretty much in a segment uh that would be um you know, somewhere that the tower that are in the area in the rear area area and you know, would be a similar visual of that. So this is another thing I can make sure of in the area, make sure um you know, there's uh no one hard for these services. People you know, use play on that plus maybe some people like that uh who hold the others uh really very out there. So but we're going to clear and we're going to everyone who can use the school so that you know, the location and then add it against very much.
Thank you for the presentation and I would like to go ahead and open it up to the board if there's any questions.
Uh Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Um Mister. From Castle, Crown Castle, how close to those towers be located to the school, the actual school? What is the distance in feet or?
Let me see, I have a little head out here. There will be just a little map here uh uh. So at the center um and I said for this possibility in terms of the house place of property. Uh so that really there is the location that uh Crown Castle was a particular house probably in the best location for them. Like I say, typically we would a fifty feet, hundred feet in our direction and typically uh over five miles as well. So I I listen to the location, so that's a lot of there here. This would be about two hundred and thirty to two hundred and fifty feet uh that would be southern tip of the school. And then uh at area of the school, I mean school we're here on that. Um let's see here. Here you know, it looks like it would be a little from the school. Uh it would be about eight hundred feet from the school. If we look at the area you know, put it all all the way in east uh side, it's about eight hundred feet.
Thank you.
I have just a quick question in regards to the lease rate, monthly rate or annual rate. What is that um is there a particular formula that uh allows you to come to that rate? Or how just making sure that those prices, those dollars are competitive?
Sure, so we uh we look at the market at for cell towers uh and in general area. So uh there's currently ten of the four cell towers be given at um hopefully we're ready for that. And then also looking at a parking lot used in and after the government towers. So uh that's the area within how they're using. Yeah, I see. You know, I'm looking at after going to the market at for towels in that area there. And then like in the last day, you know, it's been a very um by location and I say um you know, typically the national average is twelve to fourteen hundred um that I can go up in. You know, really high on areas, they could go down and you know, the whole um the whole you know, off that area. So it's just a very by location for this area, you know, within how they're using uh the management of the house.
So you consider this to be your best final offer?
Yes. Uh I was just I was just gonna I was gonna say that anyway, you can be the old into the further stuff. He's there at a certain point that you spend um you know, Crown Castle, the the it has to make sense there by any laws. Uh you know, if you ask for a will or a name of ours to put the tower to ground. Uh you can instruct your boss and then your boss uh to deal with simply the work. So it's significantly the stuff on the front uh you know, so I think that's just be my goal with that. But I say this, you know, it would be still on this.
Are there any other questions or ideas?
Do you just have a quick question since I'm not very familiar with cell tower installation? How does it benefit your company unless it costs more than a million dollars to put it in? What's the benefit for you?
So Crown Castle has been operating a tower. They are fully they either run the business with a wireless carrier, they're on all their towers. So they're in paid by the wireless carriers for the use of the space on the tower. So when we come to Crown Castle, they um you know, they own an operating tower and then they give it up. Their their customers basically are on the wires.
Any other questions?
Any word? Just add due to generally we see these days, things like Crown Castle uh really are uh in a major player in the reason there in the tower. This is another cell tower. Typically, those that are going to turn like an operator in town, these days instead of the D R as a carrier to the cells. Build in their own cell towers. They uh have their own company like Crown Castle uh typically refers to use space on a non-traffic to my cell. So they're in the they're in cell or home business and not the real estate business. So uh you know, they're making Crown Castle.
I have a question. Do you currently have cell towers in your school sites?
Yeah, yeah, we do them all the time and administer it. Yeah, um I had no uh I have a big area, you know, I'm a sister, but uh maybe I just my cell tower. Uh these you know, investing in the door over here. This is and then a lot of our um a lot of the Crown Castle towers are on school properties. Generally, generally we see this where there are um often in schools where there are those that are there for the tower. You know, with the properties for uh cell tower, you know, and then the tower also all that time is giving uh school properties I have are um in a given area and the school, you know, school districts are all in that. You know, it's a very good for um for other ones that have um you know, uh and and.
And how was the question taken? Everybody where you go?
Uh typically six pages uh and I can tell you the season and you know, particular areas that I've given and you know, uh. They're probably one hundred.
I do have a couple of questions um to follow what Conley was asking. You said that you are aware of other cell towers being around schools. Can you give a list of what where those are and where they're located and what did you say as to where they're at?
Uh you know, I didn't see you like in something you know, there is this. I think how the school was first, you know, where they're all in the country that Crown Castle has three years. So I I can just see you know, that's what you didn't know that you can't do that.
All right, one of the concerns for me is the attention to this culture um from an health standpoint to you. Can you elaborate a little more on that?
Sure, so um you know, I can say that this is uh this is the everyone else is kind of operating combined with all the F C C. You know, regulations uh just like any any of the you know, forty miles towers plus their Crown Castle has. Uh and it'll be simple, it would be identical technology to the same technology. So I know with cell towers, you can do two hundred plus cell towers, two hundred uh thousand plus cell towers in the country. So this is what I'll relate to various of F C C um Castle and our carriers that are already put in. Have a whole departmental of um you know, engineers, insurance, insurance, the tower lives, you know, that all the distinct ones that are in the government state. Uh so you know, other than that, we prefer to give it a whole floor instead of studying this, you know, in actual years. Uh and then how you know, they go up in any sort of uh and then you know, the ten X first period of that. Uh and then you know, quarters where you you can get a lot more radiation just because of the whole interview. And then you would go sell a lot of that a couple hundred feet away. So uh whatever you know, say that uh for you know, very very careful to make sure that I think if we're within that title, we'll have the bases that can provide uh all the available renovations for uh the uh ready for the emissions.
Thank you. Just a couple other quick questions for for me. Um in regards to this model cell tower installation, do you know if there's any examples of where you had this installed that are near a residential area? That may be closer or further away from two hundred to two hundred and fifty feet and so about or maybe eight hundred feet for the other school or? What's that normal distance?
Yeah, there's a way to set up the distance. Uh there is no uh there really no safety in this room. Uh I was trying to you know, possibly to uh make improvements that gives you the most school. So really as far as cell tower uh I think it was close as uh these two. I haven't said generally those programs that are prospective, um you know, local and suburban areas. You don't like the towers that are generally like that. Then that's the most programs that are prospective because you know, this is definitely very visible. Um you know, it would be about five hundred feet here, so you know, it's something that's visible. I will say uh this part is just quite within I agree there. There is a um just took the the north of um the two schools there. Uh there's it's an interesting tower, it's a tower from a past tower to a different height. It was there on on Forey Street and uh it's like a hard head for like it's just probably four or five miles over the east there. And then it's a tower that uh it's like against tower tower that that's so far there and then it's really there. And that's about a hundred, it's like about a hundred feet away from the most towers. Uh so this is this is a pretty significant, I mean, second in all the you know, the territory on that tower, I hope you should be there.
Well, I want to thank you for um playing on the very community school, bringing this presentation to us. Um I'm gonna open the floor to the board. Personally, I I had the way I have an opportunity to digest some of the information that's shared with us today. And I'll also give um Crown Castle an opportunity to look at all their best and final offer. Um so that maybe we could meet at next meeting and have uh a whole of us back.
And if we give you any information, Mr. Chair, about the two districts where they are our towers.
Yes.
And Mr. Chair, we got up to that school list. Can you make sure it's a comparative list for a early school district? That that can compare to the two here in this school or two. And that like a cell tower in the rural here area.
Did you ask any other questions, sir?
Okay. I I can uh I I can uh I can see you know, what going in, you know, but uh if you want just like looking at uh you know, some of those requirements for this um all, you know, there's there's plenty of uh there's a lot of policy, you know, like.
And and I think uh Dr. Stoss did made a great observation. Really doesn't have to be a Crown Castle installation. It can be uh like you referred to earlier there with an installation that is supposed to be which is just one of the technology and they're aware as well that that technology is existing.
We have Crown Castle, yeah, we uh kind of maybe the owner operated site. Uh and then we still learned that any cell towers are better in their area. And that that location that that's not Crown Castle tower, it's a long address. Uh and then again, on Forey Street and a hard head for like uh and then that's um there's this there's that and I can I can see you know, all the whole locations for cell towers in that area on that. But I wanted to point out as an example of US, but interestingly, I was in the area, you know, and possibly you will.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate your time. I can entertain a motion to table to our next seat. Okay. Let's move on to item number seven point two, Dr. Stoss.
Alright, thank you so much. Uh so we are moving on to our first reading of our very good students student templates. And I'd like to tell you why this is so important, um we would be bored, so please. These are our policies. There are actually we read this um rule of evidence that have uh look at each page. They have two on a highlight, three particular policies that I believe in any shared community so that at least have complete information. Um but I'm gonna give the board a little bit of chance to look at the policies we sent you and then I wanna have a read. So then if you move to our next step, please. And then if you will our last setup. So if you will move back to the first page, I'm gonna talk about policy five one three six which deals with personal communication devices. I think there's um a little bit of misinformation and I try to be as clear as possible that our community, our teachers and our students understand. When we talk about personal communication devices, we are essentially talking about what you might call computers or cell phones or things that are entered that our students utilize. There's a misunderstanding that you cannot use any of these devices in the school building at all. That's not true. Um basically what Indiana codes set out to do was to basically protect instructional time. So students are prohibited from using a personal communication device during instru- instructional time. Except here are the exceptions. Except that a teacher may allow students to use a personal communication device for educational purposes during instructional time. And we basically said uh we want our teacher approval, which basically means that as the teachers are testing plans and we know that they are in plan and engaging activity where they might be using communication devices or cell phones and of that nature. The second exception is that a student may use a personal communication device to manage the student's healthcare in an event of emergency. Or the third is a student may use a personal communication device if the used study device is included in the student's individualized education program or section five or four. I did want to go on to say that there were other provisions that the school had decided. And we made a lot of those decisions based on our ability to support our students. For example, um do we allow students to use them before school? Well, I had a lot of we have the ability to say you can't because you have four thousand seven hundred students, so we mark yes. Then there was a question about if we use them in the schoolhouse. Well, you can't use them in the classroom if we don't say we can use them in the schoolhouse. So there were things like that, I can't use them at lunchtime. We don't have the ability to monitor and we have to inspect or we expect, we have to choose what we want to support in terms of a cell phone license. We're not gonna tell students no one says you can't use a cell phone. So those were the types of choices we had. I did want to bring clarity around the fact that students can use their cell phones in the schoolhouse. But we're trying to inspect or we expect, be able to guide us around using them. We typically just want to protect instructional time and we want to make sure that these devices are not used in a malicious way that causes erosion in our school environment, so I want to clarify that. The other policy that I want to talk to about for just a minute is policy five two, twenty three and actually five two hundred also. They're kind of similar but they're they're. Fifty two hundred basically is the intended policy. So it's talking about um our students coming to school, some of the rules that that are really like what happens when we don't come to school. Um for example, if you miss five days consecutively, there are some rules around that have been at meetings with the families. And so we've been encouraging students to make sure that they attend in school. But fifty two twenty three, I want to home in because that is new for us as a community and I already have questions. Fifty two twenty three deals with um the least time for religious instruction, so let me talk about that for a minute. Basically, um upon signing, they request a student's parent, the board will allow the exception to our students' continuous attendance at schools for religious instruction outside the school building for no more than a hundred and twenty minutes a week. So essentially, a student could leave our facility to go for religious uh purposes of two hundred and twenty five minutes a week. What I want to say is while that is possible, we want to encourage our parents to think wisely. We will not okay students leaving during for instructional time such as reading, math. We can't have any because that devalues what we are here for, teaching and learning as a school, right? So um we want to support our parents and we have to follow the law. But we can be for up to two hundred and twenty minutes and we need to leave strategic times and don't interfere with our instruction. With that being said, um we also understand that it is important for students to be able to earn credits if they can earn credit given that they're at a religious instruction that has met certain guidelines with regards to instruction time. Uh making sure that they have syllabus, making sure that the methods were assessed and are used in their course offerings and making sure that they're taught by some type of licensed instructor. So I just wanted to clarify that particular policy because I had questions around least time for religious instruction. And the last one that I want to talk about is a policy five three four zero point zero one. So I'll go there and that deals with student concussions and sudden cardiac arrest. Our athletic director would normally be here, unfortunately, decided to be here tonight, so I'll speak briefly. In a nutshell, what you're saying here is parents, we know that um you have best intentions for your children and we know that you are your children's first educators. However, because we as a school which have to care on the safety of our children, we will not allow just the word of a parent when a child has had a concussion. We have to have written note from the doctor and in front of the parent, not just the parent. So this is a change that allows your child to be able to feel that how for example and if it all feel. So I just want you to understand that we are caring on the safety of our children. So those are just three things that I know are slightly different or maybe some past practices that we want you to understand the wrong way. And with that, um that is all I have to do.
Thank you. Uh like I move on on our agenda to item number eight. I believe this is the syllabus report for Chief Operating Officer. Mr. Grant, Director of of Sills, thank you for your.
Try now.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Uh maybe anything, here is a community two or one hundred, I have to say. Here is anything. Uh my name is Christopher Munch and I'm a public speaker for the group facilities director. Uh I wanted to share with this presentation to the night. Uh, I wanted to share with this presentation to behind. Uh, the first unit, L E T, volume upgrades for our position. Our article on has been created by, 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 uh, one point four years. We're also running three point seven million houses a year, which is equivalent of taking over three hundred and sixty-five vehicles off the road every year. We have a temporary warranty on all the lights that they provided. And in, in particular, our community is a brand name, so hopefully we don't have to excuse him. Uh, second slide, we got our beginning service that we did. This is in the top. We did West Side Trump engagement, which was ruined or replaced. The trees are gone. Um, does it circle around the trees is gone and we are replacing it with a new log. Beverage on the bottom had, had both, her body lines re-gradated and then all the hot will come on. So our little ones are happy, they're happy over there. Um, the third slide would be the West Side Science Room. We have seven rooms gone. We removed the old furniture and then suddenly the gas furnace covered in there. We, we get faster flooring that I live in there. We added new corners, new furniture in most of the classrooms and then we add a new tile and then go case. My call. We redid all of the controls. So last year, the last car, the lady to control the zone within the school. The air was either on or off. Uh, it's creating a really, really bad feeling. Was, um, so we put the controls in every classroom. We now maintain the temperature that was requested. The new control will save us a considerable amount of energy and it turned, um, a huge cost in this for us. Quite hard project. It was difficult to handle the problem in one corner because of the total kinds of things. The fifth part would be Norman's demolition. We have removed all the trees around the building. We've added a fence thing. We are waiting for approval from the state, which is a, I prefer from the city thing. Uh, the state is fully, they can fully, they're ready to get the demo process, um, and I think it's pretty easy for the next couple of weeks. And I had one, I mean, a few people in the community are really happy to see that one. Last slide, the one on Volcarado is maybe seeing like this small. But these are small projects, which is what, uh, when we made this team, got that done, um, and I'm gonna hide all of them, I've been hiding, cut out a corner a few years. And if you can tell, this room, like the big green room, and they got your name as well, um, it's like in the heart of the United States, we didn't know that. Um, but we're taking, I'm gonna, I've been, few projects over the summer, and we replaced like the whole face of the second floor of the high school. If you can see, um, the top picture, the bottom picture, makes us a very different, it's, it's a small thing, but it makes us very different. We painted all around the skirts, all around the skirt, including here, including outside, we predated the lighting, and we painted these complete pictures here, these are not yet up, they're getting painted. And I'm extremely proud of it, I'm proud to be a part of what I deserve as a team. And any questions?
Thank you for the, yeah, yeah, I really appreciate, um, your vision to share. I'd like to move to item number nine, on our agenda, uh, the board reports, item number one, versus, you guys, something you'd like to share, last afternoon.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I just wanted to share that last Thursday, we had a very productive, uh, policy committee meeting, and then Dr. Jones just, um, reiterated some of the things that were discussed, but we managed to repeat one of those policies that were listed. And, um, I'd just like to remind you that much of it is very descriptive, because the state did take the guidelines about which one must, one must operate, where, 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 where there was, and an ability to be flexible, and anything that came shows very good, um, uh, items or areas where they could exercise invesibly, and still maintain the integrity of what is being done at our school, and how we educate and serve our students.
Uh, Dr. Jones, thank you for your leadership as our policy committee chair, and the support you give the board in that capacity.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Condolences to the family, the parents, the students, the father, and the immediate family, and definitely all of the students, uh, school family. I definitely remember, you know, a great person, and it's hard for everyone, so it just continues to pray and look up, school and the family, and especially grandchildren, that, that was safe in the incident. Um, Dr. Jones, number ten, congratulations, we're making an immediate solution for having students to have school here at the area, area, and I came over and checked now, and they were excited. Um, I don't know how I did that, unless they had your team stayed all night, um, they had every exception all. I think the students stood up, I think they were at a big, because they were excited, they were learning. Uh, the teachers also were able to turn on the light, to make sure that those students were engaged, they had smart boards all up in there. So I, I think that they want to stay here, I don't know if that's, yeah, but they were excited about coming. And Dr. Jones, again, I know that you must have stayed here all night with your team to make that happen in twenty-four hours. And lastly, I please, congratulations to the students, and President Leonard Olson for the bright light. And if you need every morning, and do this every day, students flying to school?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
What time, I'm sorry, what time is this? In the morning?
I think it was two thirty-five, and, uh, six forty-five, we have the meeting, uh, we have a setting, and we saw, I said, the law.
And it's the, the bright light, yeah, right? Where do you, where do you put the lights when they fly to school?
Get a little, a little, a little, a little, a little. I'm also, I started with, instead of kids, I hope to be taken down, and I have four, getting, from a relationship with the kids.
And do you have security as you are traveling with students?
Not necessarily, security, I have staff, I have four years of driving, so we remain there, um, they're here all, so they will, uh, try, and they will, uh, ask you to do this, whatever.
Thank you, we, I just want to.
Thank you, any other forward observations? I would like to encourage the group here to support our little teams Friday night. We have a game at West Side against the team in Chicago, so I'd like to cheer our team victory. Uh, we know who want to beat that team in West Air.
So I definitely need us to show up, because a superintendent called me, and he wanted a wager. And I told him I had no way of letting me do his wager. He said that if they beat us, I have wear their logo in a picture with him. And that if we beat them, he wears our logo as the team.
Well, let's encourage our team, so superintendent won't have to dress that up. Let's move on to the agenda, item number ten, superintendent reports.
Thank you. So as always, I'd like to share what I call, um, matters of corporation interest. And what I think is that I'm gonna talk a little bit about I read. And I'm gonna read straight from the Indiana Department of Education. The Indiana Reading Evaluation and Evaluation, otherwise known as I read, is a reading assessment developed in accordance with the state legislation. I read is designated to measure foundational reading skills based on Indiana academic standards. And here's what's important, through grade three, there's a misconception that this is only a third grade assessment. This is assessing foundational skills technically from pre-K through third grade. And so as such, we will hold all of the teachers accountable to make sure that we are teaching our students how to read in all of those grades. With that being said, um, there is some new guidance, as many of you are aware. When students don't pass the I read assessment in grade three, two things happen. One is they have to go to vulnerable summer school, we will, to have a second opportunity to learn and to master that assessment. If they don't master that assessment, there are certain things that we have to make decisions regarding as to whether or not we will make a promotion to the next grade level. So we see how important this is. Um, there are some things that we're going to try to use to support families around literacy. I know we've heard about the science of reading, so there are some things that we are doing to make sure we support our students. With that being said, I want to raise your attention to the screen. Um, this app is no longer in Marco. So with that being said, you see basically twenty nineteen, of course, twenty twenty was around the COVID era. And so twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four, and this is just a trend. Gary is in the orange, and the state is in the blue, and as you see, we did a little bit, and we're making our way back up. And on this next slide, this is basically our elementary schools, and each bar, different color, represents a particular year. So I'll just give you a second to look at that. I will show that as well, that kind of breaks this all down, so just kind of look at what I have at the wheel at this point, and you can see how schools are doing. And so on our next slide, I want to let you, do you want to give a shout out? Miss Chelsea, come on, talk about one of our schools real quick, I don't, stay for you, there's a lot to talk about. All of our schools, as you can see, I, I don't want to leave any school out. In twenty twenty-four, um, they done a board job with different cohorts. Even if you see that a school goes back a little bit, understand that these are different students. So it's a different group of students coming in with different needs, and I'll go as to make sure we meet all of those needs. But I do want this, we're going to talk a little bit about one of our particular schools. And then at one particular school, it is Bagger at Monquet, at sixty-five point four percent. As soon as the test was became minor cargo, this is, and I didn't call you, but, um, we needed to start to reach out about what we are doing, and you will hear more about science reading, the program, the tier. And then you also recall that we were here this time last year, questioning what went on, the tier, we have to add that to our online tutoring program, where students were able to bring their back on minor via tutors, and get a tradition to report, if there are any questions. And so I have four principal shared, or weighed, over a couple of days, said, what did you do? Those went up to the top, and, um, we don't want to force a hand, and they're just, it's starting. They're getting higher and higher, uh, so. We know literacy is one of our passions, and I believe we have to, we have to teach our children how we, we know that that's a game here. So we have to make sure that our children are reading. Um, with that being said, I do want to move on then to district attendance. So I know it's near and dear to my heart, and the board as well, that we keep audible volumes in our schools. So one way to keep them in our school is to make sure that what we're learning is what we're going to be here. So we want to talk a little bit about what we done, giving you three snapshots in time. The first day of school, the twenty-third of August, and then yesterday, the twenty-seventh of August. And basically, for each school, what I'm trying to show you is how many students were enrolled on those particular days. What day the attendance was, and then what's important to me, as a building, what percentage was for students in attendance. We see some areas where we may need to improve a lot more, and we see some areas where we're heading toward the target of a hundred percent. What I do also want to, um, remind you of is that here, here, in the research center, we look there, for example, on August twenty-third, we see one sixty-seven occurrences. That number represents our students, Gary, West Side students. However, when you include the non-public schools, there's a total of two seventy-four. So I want you to understand those numbers. The other thing that I want you to focus on, um, I want to talk a little bit about what we done differently. My board president asked, what have we done differently in the last year? So what we did that we done differently is we have a new student support department. And essentially, what that department has been doing along with support on our faces, the department in our schools, they're just not making phone calls with my, or our children, or, I'll, I'll say boots to the ground. So we have in that department, three leaders, and then what they're doing is they are going out, boots to the ground, in the community. They're sitting, of course, um, they will take every call off as quickly as they need to. They're going out, boots to the ground, they are literally going house to house. Where students have enrolled, this is students who are already say they belong to our wonderful Gary family. They're going out to find out, and to support parents, and help get our students, getting our students in school. We know how important it is to be here, they're giving that message. So we look at the very bottom, you will see district totals, you see that on the fourteenth, we started out with about four thousand nine hundred and six students enrolled, but look at how many showed up. Just under three thousand, not acceptable for us, that's seventy percent. But we will see on the twenty-third, we moved the enrollment number up to forty-three twenty-one, and also, our daily attendance rate went up to thirty-five twenty-six, eighty-two percent. And if you look, yesterday, we had just under forty-four hundred students enrolled. And today, I can tell you, when I was over here for Bagger, I know we had three or four more show up that were new. Um, and we have eighty-two percent, we're not a hundred percent, but we're moving in the right direction, and we want to thank all of our community members who heard our call, and know that it's important for students to be in school. So with that, I think that's the rest of. I'm gonna move to our pivot, go to our next slide, this is. This is Bagger today here at the research center. So I'm gonna have Crystal sign to the button for just a moment. And what I want to tell you is that in this left corner here, we tried to show you the picture of how we worked. Thank you, that I'm proud, a team of us worked tirelessly, and that team consisted of probably every department in Gary community schools, from technology to maintenance, to our security support, to teaching and learning, just every department that you can think of, I won't miss anybody. But what I will tell you is that we put a plan together, we came together yesterday at nine o'clock, and I pulled my team together, and we came up with a plan, and we left out, and everybody knew what their responsibility was, and we took that plan seriously, and we staged, we basically staged the schoolhouse in the room over here. And then today, of course, we all met here, we had transportation, picked up our walkers, picked all our students up, and this is our students entering. So what you saw was the students entering, and these are other pictures about things that just went on during the course of the day. I do want to say that we will unfortunately, maybe for the kids personally, but we will unfortunately have to be here again tomorrow, and maybe through the rest of the week. Um, we still don't have our children's number line, what we need to, to run. We have a message to our community and our families, that our students will be here again tomorrow. So we thank our teachers, our staff, our community, our parents, and most importantly, our students for a wonderful day.
Thank you, Dr. Jones, is this something I'd like to move on to, item? Eleven, and then, or, or?
Now that's my fault, I apologize. Um, we wanted to look at our proposed draft agenda for our next meeting. Uh, our here, our recent snapshot will deal with the new progress curriculum, which I think is timely, because we've been talking about I read, we've been talking about just supporting our students in literacy, so that will be timely. Um, some of the other things are pretty routine, I'm trying to, we'll be bringing back, um, the cell towers for consideration by the board, and we will have a second reading of our student five thousand series. And I think that everything else is pretty standard.
Thank you, I'd like to remind, uh, the community this year that, uh, we've asked you to make sure your comments, our focus is on the agenda, so this is an opportunity for you to have a look at our next meetings in the agenda, and see the little guys that you'd like to speak to. We were, you all declared that you wanted to do a little bit about what would we talk about, so this is an opportunity, thank you. Item ten on our agenda. I have motion, second.
Second.
All of you, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your attendance, appreciate you being here.